We will call this meeting of the Clackamas County Commission to Order and invite you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we start on the regular agenda, I have invited Dana Robinson up from Emergency Services to just update us on the status of our weather situation as it develops here, since we have a lot of rivers in Clackamas County and I know everyone has been sort of swimming their way to work on various weather-related issues out there. So Dana, could you just update us on where we are?
Certainly. Good morning, Commissioners. Happy to do that. The emergency management, the Emergency Operations Center is currently not operating. We're not activated at this time. However, we are monitoring the situation throughout the county and connected with our partners in the region. Right now, it looks like we've got some flooding impacts, at least starting to have some flooding impacts, in South County related to the Malala River. And we're in touch with the Malala Fire District. We're also in touch with the Hoodland Fire District and monitoring what's going on with Sandy River, just keeping an eye on things right now for the most part. At this point, we are not having any reports of wires down throughout the county. There are still some trees down from yesterday and the snow activities. We don't anticipate snow below 3,000 feet, but we'll continue to be in touch with our fire districts and watching what's going on with the situation. We do plan on participating in a weather briefing with National Weather Service this afternoon at 1:00 to get the latest information on the forecast. Rivers are starting to rise. We're seeing some ponding, some street flooding, just because it's raining so heavily. But we just really encourage people to be mindful, watch for if there's a possibility of wires down, you know, to keep an eye out and certainly report those to either 911 or to PGE and to be careful about that, but just to be mindful. We do have sand and sandbags available at four locations throughout the county, and citizens can look at our website if they need sand or sandbags for their homes or their properties. They can get access to those. One of them is at Bollinger Field in Malala. One of them is at the Lake Road Station in Clackamas Fire District 1 up in the Milwaukee area. Also, we have sand and sandbags at the Willamette Boat Ramp in West Lynn. And then Hoodland Fire is also putting together some sand and sandbags, and we have some out east at the Eagle Creek Fire Station. So people can look at our website or certainly give us a call at (503) 655-8378 if they need help with finding those resources.
And if there, if people wanted to report incidents that are not exactly emergency but public works-related, storm drain blocking, flooded, that sort of thing, where roadways are being flooded or trees or limbs are impinging, is there a number we should refer people to, or do you use 911 for that?
No, use 911 for life safety issues. You know, certainly if a power line is down, that's a time, you know, someone should either call 911 or PGE. But we want to reserve 911 for life safety issues. If there's a question that folks have about where to call, they can certainly call our program line at (503) 655-8378, and we can refer them. Yeah, right now, it's really challenging to make sure your storm drains are clear. If you can go out there with, you know, the stick and clear the leaves out of the storm drain, that can be really helpful. But if folks don't know where to turn, we can certainly direct them.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the time.
Appreciate the update.
All right, thank you.
And that brings us to our public hearing, which is on the proposed ZDO amendments. And we have with us Larry Conrad and Martha Fritz from the Planning Division and Rhett Tatum from County Council. And, okay, I guess I will, I will now call to order the January 19, 2011 Public Hearing to Consider Amendments to the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance. This is a public hearing on ZDO 232, a package of legislative text amendments to the county's comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance related to the Southeast 172nd Avenue and Southeast 190th Drive Corridor Management Plan. The proposed comprehensive plan amendments would adopt the corridor management plan, and this proposal would also amend the zoning and development ordinance to expand the definition of bikeways to include cycle tracks, a design element of the corridor management plan, and to provide additional references to Chapters 5 and 10 of the comprehensive plan. The hearing will proceed as follows. We will first hear the staff presentation from our planners, and next, public officials will have five minutes each to speak if they wish. And then representatives from any recognized community planning organizations will have five minutes each. And finally, anyone else who wishes to testify will have three minutes each. If you want to testify, you should fill out a card, and I believe they are the green cards as opposed to the blue cards, which are for citizen comment. But if you want to speak on this ZDO public hearing, you should fill out a green card and pass it up to the recorder. Likewise, if you have a written statement, you can give that to Mary, our recorder. And with that, I think we're ready for our presentation.
Good morning, and thank you, Chair Leon and members of the board. We're bringing you the final, this is the final step in our process of producing a corridor management plan for the 172nd and 190th corridor. This particular project represented for us a unique opportunity in that it gave us a chance to refine an existing set of plans we've had in our TSP for a number of years and tie down much more firmly the location of one of the major north-south connections of the county. This area is the only good connection between I-205 and 242nd that will serve the two-way traffic that goes between Clackamas County and East Portland and Gresham. The preferred alternative that we are bringing forward to you ties into the county's previous investment on 172nd Avenue. That was a factor in the final decision. This piece is also a project that is in conformance with the regional transportation plan, and it's been a project on our transportation system plan for about 12, 13 years. The opportunity to plan this corridor before development occurs is fairly unique in our system and part of function of the fact that this area was adopted, was brought into the urban growth boundary at the end of 2002. So it's been rural for a long time. It's now preparing for a transition to a more urban area. The corridor, as we said, will serve the expected future growth in Damascus, in Happy Valley, in the Pleasant Valley Plan area, and those connections between Gresham and East Clackamas County that we've identified over the years. It'll also serve a strong regional demand. This road, when it's finished someday, will connect Highway 212 to Columbia South Shore and 84, one, as I said, one of the few continuous links. We had, we invited all the jurisdictions affected by this to be involved in the process. The cities of Damascus, Gresham, and Happy Valley all chose to join us, along with Metro. The cities of Portland and Multnomah County opted out. They said they didn't really have major issues because this would eventually be serving Gresham more than serving them. We have a consulting team that came with us. Wade Scarborough from the team is here in case there are any questions you have of the team. I will zip through this fairly quickly. We did a fairly extensive public involvement process, including stakeholder interviews, a public advisory committee that had five meetings, five open houses. We ran a virtual open house process where at times we actually had more comments come in on our virtual open houses online than we had at public meetings. Successful public involvement process, as in all processes. Not everybody agreed with the outcome, but generally speaking, there was consensus and it moved forward. The study area, as you can see from this map that we looked at, is from Sunnyside Road where the recent improvements to 172nd stop up to the county line. We did do analysis farther north into Gresham to confirm that we weren't going to be causing any problems for their system, problems that they didn't already know existed. They know they have a problem at 181st and Powell. We simply confirmed it. The future transportation demand in the area, the big roads, the major roads in the area run around 7,000 to 8,000 trips a day. They're forecast to go into the range of 20,000, 25,000 in 2035. That's enough traffic to require what we would usually refer to as a five-lane road, which is a four-lane road with a median, so you can handle left-turn pockets. It's also in the area that roundabouts work very well for intersections, so we recommended a number of those. The corridor went through a series of goal-setting and a fairly enhanced planning process. We looked to focus on mobility to minimize impacts on the area and to provide some flexibility as this process developed. We did a lot of work on streetscapes. One of the fun parts of this, we gave people a series of basically cutouts that said, "Okay, how would you like this street to be put together?" Now, the most fun one is up on a big chunk of two before with lanes that are about eight to 10 inches wide. You can put them all together and see this large piece. We would then shoot photographs of them and bring them forward as suggestions. We also did some fairly detailed environmental analysis, hoping to shortcut, if the day comes we have to deal with federal process, we will be able to say, "We've looked at these issues in advance." As I said, the process of developing this, we asked the citizens to give us ideas of how they think this corridor could be developed, and they came up with 61 sketches. We had things like the 3D map that you see there. We did what we refer to as Transportation Planning 101 and gave them the basis of how to do this. They gave us 61 sketches. We boiled them down and put sort of general transportation and engineering parameters on it, came up with 18 concepts. Then we started walking through a series of meetings, reducing the number each time. Came down to a preferred alternative about six months ago. That's what you're hearing here tonight, this afternoon. Oops, wrong button. So what did I do that time?
They can shut it off.
There it is. As you can see, the main, the main project is that red line that goes, starts at Sunnyside Road and 172nd, goes up 172nd to about, well, north of Hemrick, where there currently is a turn that goes to the west. In this case, the road would then move to the east and cut across land that isn't, where there isn't any road, and tie into the end of 190th. In part, that's to avoid some elevation, some grade problems on 190th. The original TSP proposals for this would have tied this road into the end of 190th at Tilstrom, and we would have had to deal with some fairly serious grade issues in there. By moving slightly farther north, we not only matched the RTP project, but we managed to avoid most of those grade issues. As part of this, we proposed a new typical cross-section, which includes a cycle track. Cycle track is a semi-protected bike lane that provides a little more security for the people that are using it and encourages people to use that particular piece. It's about eight feet. Our current bike standards are about six. But there's an 18-inch little raised curve on the outside that moves this up about three or four inches so that a driver will feel on their tires when they're getting too close to the bike lane. We've talked through, our engineers are excited about this. Would like to see these happen. There are some examples in the Portland area. This is the main, probably the main new connection is this piece that goes across the open area. As part of the last stage of this, we printed out some maps that were eight feet wide and 16 feet long because people said they couldn't see where their house was, and walked around and said, "Okay, my house is here and the road is here." It was one of the, one of the fun parts of the process. And we're now in the adoption process, and I will turn this over to Martha.
Hi, Mrs. On. I'm Martha Fritz with the Planning and Zoning Division, and Larry gave you some good background on what the corridor management plan is. I'm going to talk about what I consider the more mechanical part of the process and how we implement this. And it first starts with adopting it into our transportation system plan. Because of where it's located, it's not just us. The city of Happy Valley and the city of Damascus will also have to adopt it into their transportation system plans. And what you're looking at is the schedule of the known hearings to do this. We are at the red, obviously, the board hearing. We held Planning Commission Work Session and Hearings toward the end of last year and had a study session with you all about a week ago, just to give you a little bit of background on this. Happy Valley's got hearings planned at the end of this month and next month. The city of Damascus obviously doesn't have a transportation system plan yet. They're going to need to consider this, and we're involved in the process. So they will consider it when they do their transportation system planning. So on the county level, to adopt this, what we are proposing is considered legislative text amendment. We are going to adopt it into Chapter 5 of our comprehensive plan, which is our transportation system plan. Staff is also proposing, like Larry mentioned, a few other amendments to the zoning and development ordinance, primarily to enable the cycle track, which wasn't really defined clearly, didn't fall into our definitions of any of our bikeways. There's also some minor amendments proposed to the Section 1007 roads and connectivity that generally tie the zoning ordinance back to, a little bit better back to the comprehensive plan. A little more specifically, what's being proposed in Chapter 5 of the comprehensive plan are adding a section called Special Transportation Plans. In this section, we would adopt the corridor management plan by reference. The purpose of adding a whole section to do that is, the hope is, in the future, we can continue, hopefully we'll have the opportunity to continue to plan for transportation projects and roads ahead of development like we've been able to do now. And there will be a series of other similar-type plans that we can adopt in, and they will all fall under this section. Additional amendments include adding a few policies and goals and amending several of the others to reference the corridor management plan and reference the various elements of the corridor management plan or what we expect would be in other special transportation There's several tables and maps that had to be amended in Chapter 5 as well, the first table being V1, which is the 20-year capital improvement needs. The new alignments and intersections needed to be added to that table. And Larry did a good job explaining this, I think. It's not really adding things to the table. This is really a refinement of projects that were already in the table and getting a little more specific about where they're exactly going to be aligned, what sort of intersection treatments they're going to have. So those changes needed to be made to the, to the Table V1, the 20-year capital improvement needs. Table V5 was changed simply to add reference, again, to the corridor management plan. And then the maps listed up there, which include the maps showing all of the projects on the 20-year capital improvement plan, road functional classes, regional street designations, bikeways, freight routes, they all needed to be changed to reflect the new alignments in this area. Appendices A and B also had to be amended. Appendix A lists all the documents that are adopted by reference, as this would be. And Appendix B is other background documents. Some of the background documents that were important to the corridor management plan, we thought should be included also in the comprehensive plan. And it was a lot of paper, and it seems like a lot of changes, but the only real substantive change was to the maps and the locations of the roads and just adding that separate section to Chapter 5. The proposed zoning and development ordinance, again, are not hugely substantive. It includes adding cycle track, defined as an exclusive grade-separated bike facility elevated above the street using a low-profile curb and a distinctive pavement material. Adding that to the definitions of bikeways, currently, we have four types of bikeways defined. And like I said, the cycle track didn't really neatly fit into any of those. We think this needs to be a separate, a separate type of bikeway. And then adding cycle track as one of the types of bikeway in Section 1007, and again, adding some additional references to ensure that when someone's going through the zoning ordinance, they do indeed look back at Chapters 5 or 10 of the comprehensive plan to make sure that they're following what's in those sections. This is a legislative text amendment. Section 1400 of our zoning and development ordinance outlines the procedural requirements for legislative amendments. Those procedures required, Chapter 11, or were followed, Chapter 11 in our comprehensive plan also has some procedural requirements, which are primarily coordination and notification requirements. We followed all of those. And as Larry stated, this project was very well coordinated with all of the surrounding jurisdictions or all the affected jurisdictions, and many of the service providers and other individuals and agencies in the area that would be affected were involved on the project advisory committee. Chapter 11 of our comprehensive plan also requires that any plan amendments be consistent with the statewide planning goals and Metro's urban growth management functional plan. The statewide planning goals that apply in this situation would be Goals 1, 2, and 12. And the portions of those, it's generally citizen involvement, land use and transportation. The portions of those that apply, again, really have a lot to do with coordination and notification, which we feel was very well done. And there's nothing really applicable in the urban growth management functional plan to this road project. They've recently moved a lot of their transportation requirements out of that plan and into their transportation functional plan, which is a part of their regional transportation plan. So because this is an amendment to our transportation system plan, we also need to be compliant with Metro's regional transportation system plan. So we took a look at that, and staff found it to be consistent with that as well. The major elements of this project are already proposed, are already identified in Metro's regional transportation plan, including a connector from 172nd to 190th, all of the road classifications, these roads being designated on the bike and pedestrian networks, the regional design classifications, they're all consistent with the regional transportation plan, as well as the applicable policies in the regional transportation system plan. So I stated, we already had a hearing with the Planning Commission, and at that hearing, there were a few issues that came up. There was some discussion about, and I think that perhaps we didn't make it very clear, that we weren't adding a new project to the 20-year capital improvement plan. So there was some discussion about whether or not it was appropriate to add a project to it right now. And we just wanted to reiterate that this really represents a refinement of those projects, and it designs a project to a much more detailed level than existed in the, in the TSP before. There was also some discussion about the timing of this project and whether or not it was premature. We think that this represents a great opportunity to plan ahead and to allow for the preservation of right-of-way as development comes into the area, and also to phase this project appropriately so it fits whatever funding is available and whatever the area needs as it starts to urbanize, because nobody's exactly sure how fast this area's going to urbanize. So those were the main issues that came out of the Planning Commission hearing. The Planning Commission did recommend a few small edits and changes to a few maps and to the titles of one of the appendices in the corridor management plan. Aside from that, there were no other recommendations for changes from the Planning Commission. So those edits were made, and they're reflected in the packet, in all the materials in the packet that you received last week. So after those were requested, there was a motion to approve ZDO 232, the adoption of the corridor management plan. The vote was four to one for approval. However, as you may know, the, there is a requirement for a minimum of five votes to formally recommend an approval to the board from the Planning Commission for a comprehensive plan amendment. As a weird technical matter, the ZDO amendments can be recommended because there's not that five-vote minimum. It's just the majority of a quorum. So technically, there's no official or formal recommendation from the Planning Commission to you all regarding this, but there is a recommendation for approval for the ZDO amendments.
Kind of arcane, isn't it?
I'm not making that up.
I know, I know.
Staff also recommends approval of the amendments as proposed in the packet that you were sent last week. And that's it for our presentation. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner, you have any questions of staff?
This process began in 2010, about, I gather. There's a reference here to an 18-month process.
It's about an 18-month process, yes.
And, and just for clarity, there's, there are no, there are no funds to implement any of this. This is just part of the requirement for the TSP within this area.
That's correct. There was an identified project in the TSP to do this planning, but not an identified funding source for how we're going to deal with the next phase of it.
And should any situation that's not anticipated, a change, a land use change in the area of a neighboring city nearby affect this plan? This plan can be amended to adjust, I would gather, at any time.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So because the roadway is changing location, there's a notification process, I assume, that takes place to notify people that, you know, a road might come through their house or across their property. And so there was no testimony in opposition of the relocation of the road? I didn't see any.
That is correct. We notified everyone. We did newsletters. We did direct notifications. We did a variety of other emails from our, our involved persons list. The, you know, we did not get a lot of response. This is an area that... This is an area that has been stable for a long time and is now looking at, you know, major changes in land use at the moment, given the economy, nothing's moving. But we are starting to hear rumors that maybe something will happen.
Yeah, I had one more question, and you actually answered it, so I was just going to restate it. So the advantage or the purpose of pre-planning, of course, is that you can acquire the right-of-way so that people don't build houses there, or other projects are created during that period. And the other is the ability to phase the project. Those are the two advantages to pre-planning this far ahead.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lineiger.
So I know that this is the product of collaboration over the 18-month period with Happy Valley, the City of Gresham, City of Damascus, and Metro. At the end of the process, did all of those jurisdictions support the plan as it's come to us today?
There was not a unanimous support, but there was a general consensus. There were some issues from the City of Damascus. There was another alternative. There were two alternatives that came down to consideration. The alternative that several people from Damascus wanted can still be approached. This doesn't preempt that process, which would be an extension of Foster Road down to Highway 212. That process, though, depends on a mile and a half of road whose location has not been planned, wasn't planned as part of this.
Well, I see the mayor of Damascus here, so perhaps he'll give us comments on any input that he has. So thank you. That's very helpful.
I have a couple of questions. I've got a couple of questions. Thank you for your work on this, and I know Commissioner Savis has been really a participant on. This is the 172nd Quarter Process you've been active on as well. And I appreciate what Commissioner Lineiger said about representing a collaboration among the communities. I do have a couple of questions, though. One is, can you just talk a little bit about, and I appreciate what Commissioner Bernard said, can you talk a little bit about how an adoption of this plan opens, makes us more available to receive funding for projects in an urban area?
Commissioner, this particular piece, we tried to do this in such a way that we took the first few steps that you would normally take in a federal process, viewing it, you know, when we started the process, we said, there's two or three ways it could be funded. It could be funded by development. It could be funded by local funding, or it could be funded by federal funds. And so in putting this process together, we took those first federal steps in terms of environmental planning and cited the facility, avoiding a variety of resources. The plan itself, for example, contains a place down at, oh, 170, I have to make sure I get the right street here. At 172nd Troche, where there is an existing bridge that's going to need to be replaced. And the bridge is fairly good size, and it goes over the stream twice. One of the discussions in the development of this area was about the western extension. And as part of this, we proposed an alignment that would bring Troche down to the south. It's not actually on this particular piece, it's a little farther south. But it'd allow the road to be built with only two bridges instead of three. If you kept Troche in its current alignment, you'd have to build three bridges to do that. Doing pieces like that to minimize the impact on water facilities, on streams which feed areas that have environmental or endangered species populations. And we were looking at all of those issues. There's an environmental baseline report that is one of the pieces that is being adopted as an attachment, where we went through about 15 different environmental regulations and looked at the resources that were there and used those to help select how we located this.
So does that mean that aspects of this project are more ripe to receive funding because of that extra level of?
If, the hope in setting this up would be that if federal funding became available, assuming that happened, for example, for this piece, that we would be able to start the process by saying, we've selected this alignment, we've done all this preliminary analysis. We could go into what's called an environmental assessment by saying, here's a build alternative, here's a no-build alternative. We'll go through the assessment. Go through that. It's simpler than doing an EIS. But EIS processes typically run three to four years. EA's run a year and a half, two years, much simpler, much cheaper. That was one of the goals of trying to do this, so that we could springboard off the work we'd done.
Yeah, two other quick questions, if I may, Charlie Hand. One has to do with, you know, we're currently working on our TSP, as you know. And I know there's just concerns about, you know, there's always concern about equity in the urban and rural areas, and particularly about prioritization of projects. And I'm just wondering, how does the adoption of this plan interface with the identification of priorities that would be coming out of the TSP update that we're currently working with? So for example, does the adoption of this somehow get slid over the top of priorities that we might be identifying? Or is there a reshuffling as a result of our TSP work we're doing right now?
This doesn't change any of the existing TSP priorities and doesn't give this project any special place in the future TSP process.
Okay, thank you. And my last has to do with the cycle tracks. And I think it's an interesting concept. I am concerned about that it's a much wider cross-section and so a lot more expensive. And I just wonder, I mean, as a part of our TSP, one of the things we're trying to work on is identifying corridors that lend themselves to certain cross-sections. And so, you know, I like the addition of this because of the safety elements. And I wonder, I'm just a little concerned about, you know, applying this too heavy-handedly on multiple corridors across the county because of the cost.
The difference is about four feet.
Is it?
On your right-of-way, because our current cycle, our current bike lanes are six feet. So this adds about two feet on each side. So the net difference is four feet. Our traffic engineers and our safety engineers believe that it's a much safer facility for cyclists. Marginal increase in cost, there are trade-offs. Where it gets applied really will depend on development and what comes out of the TSP. This is, we set it up so it can happen. Now we have to go back and make some decisions on if it's going to happen.
Thank you.
Charlie Hand, the only thing I want to clarify or comment on is that, you know, I did come in in the spring, I believe, and Larry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the emphasis on this was on the alignment, more than anything. A lot of the work that I sat in on, the public comment that I heard, was all centered around the multiple alignments. So I was pretty impressed by the model that was used and the rope, people could, you know, lay the rope out and look at different alignments. And so I was pretty impressed by that. That was the, I think that was the biggest area of concern for most people, was the alignment.
Thank you. And it was. The alignment where the road goes really was the main issue. How wide it is was an issue that was discussed, but it was always a secondary part. The question of Foster Road and how Foster Road works with this facility has always been a key piece. You see up there, we recommended realigning Tilstrom, bringing it down to the south so that it works as a better intersection. What you can't see just off the map is we also recommended realigning Tilstrom and 190th so those intersections work better. A lot of these, we really focused on the main facility and on facilities that the county has jurisdiction over, because the county in these areas has jurisdiction over the arterials and the collectors. Those have not been transferred to the cities. So we focused on those portions. But as I said, it does not change any of the county's priorities in terms of projects.
Any other questions? Then we will go on to the public hearing portion and open the public testimony part. And I don't have a card for the mayor of Damascus on this item. Did you want, but I know you're here, so I didn't know if you would like to speak on this particular item, because I would call you first.
I'm Steve Bennett. Greetings, county commissioners. I did not know this was on the agenda. I came here for something different.
Oh.
But I will say that there was pretty good public communication to the public about this. So it's the people in the area are aware that this has all gone on. It's not something that's gone over the top of the citizens.
Okay.
Thank you.
You got, we have his information for the other one. Okay. Next card I have is Mike Wagner, who did sign up on this item.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Mike Wagner, 26173 South Milk Creek Circle. First of all, I'm very happy that you folks provide the service that you do to the county. I know it's not easy to do these projects. To me, all politics is who gets what money. And my concern here is that for the last seven years, there has been no paving projects except potholes in rural areas. The county is considering rural roads going to gravel. It's something that they're starting to think about. And I have no objection to the plan itself. It's a perfectly fine plan for an urbanized area at some point in time when it does become urbanized. My problem is with the overall business, I guess, of the county. When you look at the millions of dollars that were spent on the Sunrise Corridor for consulting and staff time, plus the $130 million that's already been spent on that corridor. Now we have the 172nd Corridor with probably another $1 million of staff time and consulting time. And when you add it up, this is another $140 million worth of improvements. The McLaughlin Plan is going to be coming your way. It probably has a half million dollars worth of consulting and staff time on it. And it, too, also has another $140 million worth of improvements. And then recently, you know, you just spent a million dollars, I guess, on the Lake Oswego trolley. And I guess my question is, how much staff and consultants are spending time on making rural projects grant-ready? And how many rural projects, you know, are currently grant-ready? I know a lot of these projects are financed through grants, but I'm, my concern is that the Board of County Commissioners spends a lot of money on a lot of unincorporated areas that, in my opinion, are subsidized by cities and rural areas. And I think that the county is enabling a great inequity on the rural areas of the county, and they've done this for a long time. And I think that the rural areas and the cities are getting tired of subsidizing the unincorporated areas with the county. This would have been an excellent plan for the City of Happy Valley to do and the City of Damascus to do. And I don't know why the county keeps providing urban services to these areas. And I think it's just up to the Board of County Commissioners to protect and serve all of the county. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. I also have Mac Woods, who signed up on this item.
And this TV thing, I don't think so. If you could get that on so we could see better back there, we'd appreciate it. Thank you, commissioners. I had not planned to talk on this subject, but I do appreciate it and certainly respect all the information that we learn here about here. My concern is, a big concern, is safety and who uses this and what we get out of it. Naturally, we are all in favor of doing something good and beneficial for the people that use it and who uses it and what the benefits of it are. A big concern, I was there, and I saw, I can read pretty fast, and I see you use 23 feet for what some people might think is non-essentials, where you have a road, it's only 11 feet wide. A big concern, but before I get there, I'm sorry I was late. I didn't get to do the pledge of allegiance. I respect Old Glory. I couldn't because of the water. There's a big problem out here in the county right now that needs urgent care for safety. You see cars in a ditch because they hit the water. The water draws them in. I think any of you know how that works, common sense, but a lot of new drivers don't understand it. I take my hat off to the police officers. It's out there in this rain, this mess, trying to straighten out the traffic because somebody in the area of safety has overlooked the problems with the trees growing, how fast they're growing ditches, and the ditches plug up. That needs some attention. It won't cost near as much money as this path, but just something to share, and we know from safety, it needs to be addressed. Heard about that ship running the ground, killed a bunch of people. They're suing the captain. I hope nobody comes back on us to sue the commissioners or whoever's responsible for the safety of the people that's driving on the roads, for goodness sakes. We need to get down to common sense and reality. Back on this, we put a lot of emphasis and money on bike paths. I think there needs to be some changes. This is only my opinion. It's worth just what you pay for it, nothing, but it'd be good to keep in mind. Bicycles, they want, I go into Portland even on Sunday morning, and they have millions of bike paths, dollars spent on bike paths in Portland, and you don't see anybody on them. But you come out there around the country where I live, on the edge of Kansas City limits, and for goodness sakes, they're all over the place, and they can't stay across that white line. I would suggest somebody come up with some rules that would address them, maybe make them pay a license and get a license tag on them bicycles and a fee so you could turn that money over to the cops to give them tickets to keep them in line for safety. Safety alone, bicycles, in my way of thinking, what I see, cause more accidents of people trying to dodge them. It's getting ridiculous. It's coming, thank you for hearing me, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mac.
And then I have Les Poole.
Good morning, Les Poole. My address is on record. My father built Woodard Hills Drive, which, like so many of the roads out there, have bad intersections. Woodard Hills Drive is, comes off 190th just south or just north of where 190th meets Tilstrom. I do endorse the idea of planning ahead. Anyone that would look at what we spent redoing Sunnyside Road and all the retaining walls because of what happened, with tremendous amount of development and a narrow, skinny road, I couldn't even begin to imagine how much money was spent redoing Stevens Road and redoing that area just directly east of 205 and Sunnyside. So I'm here to endorse this concept. I do have some safety concerns. I like the idea of having some bike lanes. I like the idea of having a roadway that's wider. Cross-section here didn't show what we're going to have in the middle. So obviously, there will be some kind of turn lanes, but the overall roadway for automobiles needs to be addressed a little better. I don't know if it makes sense to have a six-foot-wide planter and a 12-foot-wide bike roadway, and then have the bikes on the other side of the planter next to the sidewalk, because the bicycles and pedestrians can intermix better than the cars and the bikes. The idea of the curb being angled so that if a vehicle gets up against it is an honorable thought. But what you're going to end up with is bikes flying up and down and back and forth off that. If you've ever ridden a bike and you come off a sidewalk and you drop off, the typical bike rider can handle that. But you come off this bike or cycle track, and if it's angled, it's going to launch you even farther out in the street. So as someone with many years' land use and safety in my background, I taught forklift safety for eight years. Boy, there's an interesting game. Want to watch people think they're having fun? Yeah. So I also, like the earlier gentleman said, have got concerns about what are we getting for our dollars? And it dovetails back to what are we getting for transportation dollars overall. I'd like to request, and this is a very serious request. We're closing Clackamas County Urban Renewal District. I can think of no better place to put 25 million than into the road rather than into a light rail line. One last thing. Just curious if there's a little bit of input. Just curious if there's a little bit of input about the one planning commissioner that voted against it. They must have had a reason, and we didn't hear anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I don't have any other cards on this item, so if there's no one else interested in speaking on this, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing and, and ask the Commission if you would like to follow up on anything or other questions with staff or, and actually, I'll have a follow-up question. Perhaps, because I know this has been debated in my past lives a number of times, the, the issue of on-street versus off-street bike paths and when one is appropriate and when is the other appropriate. And I know there's no hard and fast, but maybe you or Martha could just sort of address what goes into that decision of what is preferred.
Chair Leehan, I would turn to Wade Scarborough, one of our consultants on this, and part of the team that's worked on bike safety kind of at a national level. We've relied on their, we had this discussion of where that bike lane should be, whether it should be in or out. And Wade?
There are certainly some benefits to putting it off the street, behind the sidewalk, separating it further from traffic, in terms of comfort and safety for bikers, especially bikers that may not be accustomed to riding in traffic, small-cylinder families, those sorts of users. The downside to doing that is there's intersection. You have a higher risk of issues with conflicting traffic. Vehicles are making right turns and you have that path that's separated maybe 10, 15 feet off of the vehicle lane, maybe separated by landscaping or anything. They don't necessarily see and aren't looking for that bicycle to be traveling in parallel. And when you make their right turn, they may clip a bicycle. So, in corridors where you have a long section without a lot of intersection, that's a good option to look at separating the bikes. In this case, we do have intersections that access points fairly frequently, and so having it closer to the intersection of traffic where they're in the view of the driver's intersection is actually safer, based on finding, in particular, exceeding the area of intersection.
Any other questions or follow-up?
I would be interested to hear if we have some information about the one planning commission member who did not support it, what the concerns might be.
It was Michael. Our planning commission chair was the one who did not support it.
Oh, okay.
And for the reasons he presented.
He presented, okay.
Okay. With that, then, I would entertain a motion regarding ZDO 232.
Madam Chair, I move we approve ZDO 232 as recommended by the planning commission and staff.
And I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Damon that we approve ZDO 232, although I would clarify, it's not technically recommended, right, by the planning commission. It's approved. So, with that, is there further discussion? No? No? Should I wait for Commissioner Savis to come back? Not here.
He seemed supportive, but...
I don't know if he was stepping out for a moment. I didn't know if he wanted to be a part of the vote, so...
Do you want me to go find him?
I think that's what he was doing.
Short recess?
Yeah, why don't we, we'll just take about a two-minute recess and see. I didn't know, I don't think he intended to not be a part of the vote. We just didn't want to proceed if you were wanting to be a part of...
Apologize for that, little flooding issue.
The, we were in the middle of discussion, so I didn't know if you had any discussion. And if you didn't, then...
It was moved and seconded also.
It was moved and seconded, and if there's no further discussion, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. And I have to see what else I have to follow to be exact here. I believe that brings us to our next item, then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the reading and adoption of a previously-approved ZDO ordinance. So, this one does not include a public hearing because we already had a public hearing on this item. And Rhett Tatum is here from County Council. This is the one on a mobile vending units, and you could perhaps describe it a bit.
Yeah, Commissioners, as you'll recall, ZDO 231 is a package of legislative text amendments. Its purpose was to clarify and streamline the process for reviewing applications to set up these mobile vending units, sort of food cart stands, if you think about it. It created a four-tiered system with increasingly higher review standards depending on the number and the permanence of the units at the specific cluster. Following a recommendation from the planning commission, the board held a public hearing on December 14th and voted three to one to recommend approval with the following directions to staff. First, was to limit Level 3 review to applicants seeking four or fewer carts, but not limit the number of carts under Level 4 review, which is the full design review process. The board also urged to eliminate the maximum square footage for wrapped or painted-on signs or signs that are attached to the cart, so long as they don't extend or protrude from the truck or cart. Also asked to clarify that Level 1 does not regulate signage at all. So, these are the trucks that drive on a route to, you know, businesses during lunch. They're not regulated, especially with respect to signs. And also to allow carts in Level 2 to remain on a site for up to 120 days in a calendar year, even if the site is undeveloped. And finally, there's not a limit on the length of electrical cords, but owners will be required to comply with the regulations in the Electrical Code and other regulations and keep those cords out of the way of pedestrians and vehicles. So, staff made all those changes to the ordinance, and what you'll be voting on today reflects that. Additionally, staff will check back with the board after the summer cart season to make sure things are going well, and they may do some limited public outreach with respect to the process. So, if you're ready, you can vote on it.
Okay. Commissioners, clarifying questions or follow-up?
I remember there was, was it four levels, correct?
Yes, the four-tiered system.
And Level 1's, my concern I raised about, you know, the cement trucks and the delivery trucks and so forth, as far as the sign and their painted area or what would be considered signage, that does not apply to them. The changes in the sign code does not apply to that.
The changes were made to ensure that if you're a Level 1 truck, the sign code restrictions do not apply to you.
Okay. And would you mind just reading the, how it does apply, the section of the sign code there, that how it does apply, the language?
Yeah, it'll just take me a moment to find. Jennifer, do you, I think Jennifer actually made, technically made the changes. I think she's a better person to actually speak to them.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Hughes from Planning and Zoning Division, and I do need to pull out the right section of the ordinance to do that. Do I have, I don't know if I printed the exhibits. Do you have a copy?
And while she's doing this, I'll explain why. I was reading an article in the paper where the Salvation, it was a Salvation Army out in Damascus had a truck out there, and the painted area of the sign applied. And I was following that to make sure that anything we did didn't raise a similar issue.
Commissioner, we actually didn't print out the new ones because they totaled 220 pages and didn't include them in your packet.
I think I can actually tell you where it is, though, just by looking at the draft from the hearing. I have that one printed. I haven't printed a hard copy of the one from today. What I did was actually go into subsection 1010.03, which is the exempt sign section of our sign code, and then specifically indicated there that signage on a Level 1 mobile vending unit is just exempt from the entire sign code. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Bernard?
Just a couple clarifying questions and comments. Public right-of-way, this does not allow a mobile food vending cart to park in a public right-of-way and sell their product?
No, that's correct. Activities that are actually in the right-of-way are regulated by the Road Use Chapter of the County Code, and it has limitations on vending and rights-of-way.
And the other issue is signage. Does, they still have to obey signage codes such as sandwich signs on the sidewalk or in the streetway or, so it'd have to be on private property or actually attached to the structure itself?
That's correct.
Okay. The only other one is that I had an opportunity to visit a facility in northwest Portland, about 12 units, and I was quite impressed about the whole look of the place, what they had done to accommodate electrical and the artwork they had put there. And so, I've, while I previously voted no on this because of my concerns about the Level 4, I think that that Level 4 does give adequate, you know, protection, that the facility would be, you know, a plus, really, and rather than an ugly, messy place. And I'm sure that our, our code enforcement, should an issue arise, would address those concerns if they did fall outside of those kind of standards. So, I have changed my vote on, I am going to change my vote on this and support the ordinance because that higher level does really provide a lot of opportunity and prevent what could be a hazard. So, I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Chair Leehan, so I've got a couple of things, a couple of comments about this. One is, this is one of the first items that came before me as a new Commissioner in June, and it took me by surprise in a lot of ways because of the, you know, we had regular testimony on a week-to-week basis because it hadn't been addressed for months and months, and we didn't seem to have a path forward. And I just really applaud you and particularly Dan Chandler for the work that he did in working with cart owners, the folks that were concerned, and providing certainty for the cart owners. I think, I have supported this all along. I think that you've done a really good job in coordinating with folks that had concerns and putting in these different levels. I think that allowing these kinds of carts is a step in for, at a pretty low risk, for entrepreneurial or small business. And I like that we have these regulations in place for public safety and so that people can plan as well. So, I thank you for all of that. And also, I can't, I cannot, I can't not say something about Richard Langdon. I'm surprised that he's not here to support this. I mean, people that have watched our meetings have seen him champion this, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. And so, Richard, wherever you are, we're there. We did it. We've got our, we've got our ordinance and our certainty, and thank you for your advocacy on this.
I'll just add that this was a situation where a number of, pardon?
I was just going to say, we could get a motion on and then do discussion.
Okay, yeah. Well, and we need a motion to read it by title.
We need a motion to read it, and then, so just hold your comments.
Okay, sorry.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move we read zoning and development ordinance number 231 by title only.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Savis that we read the zoning and development ordinance number 231 by title only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, and we will ask the clerk to read ZDO 231 by title.
Okay, ordinance number ZDO-231, and ordinance amending sections 202, 306, 501, 502, 503, 504, 505, 507, 508, 509, 601, 602, 603, 604, 606, 1001, 1010, 1015, 1607, 1701, 1702, 1703, 1704, and 1707, and adopting a new section, 837, of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance.
I guess that's why we didn't reproduce the whole thing.
It sounds like so many more changes than it really is.
Yes. No, I know how that goes. That, having, now having read it, I would ask for a motion to adopt.
I move we adopt zoning development ordinance number 231, amending the section stated and adopting a new section, 837, of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinances as previously approved at the December 14, 2011 public hearing.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Lininger that we adopt this ZDO number 231 with the amendments. Is there, now is there discussion, and maybe I should start since I cut you off?
Sure. Well, I just wanted to say for those out there and to address Commissioner Damon's comments, that this use was, the use sought by some of these mobile vending units by virtue of what we had in place was basically virtually disallowed. And by implementing this, this not only allows that use, but gives clarity and certainty to those people when they apply. And I think that's what Mr. Langdon was advocating for, for a long time. So, I appreciate what staff did and helping and the adjustments that were made to allow more uses than that, the Level 4, so that things like flea markets and all those other uses could happen, and by virtue of this, they wouldn't be disallowed. So, I appreciate all that effort and the board's support.
Commissioner Bernard?
So, I assume people that currently are, have violations, assuming they adhere to these codes, those violations would be removed.
Correct. Assuming they adhere to the adopted code, that's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other discussion? My only comment is that I was surprised with the testimony that we had previously. You tend to think of food carts as being mostly an urban activity, but was surprised at the interest for Mount Hood and the summer use of food carts up there. And so, I'm hoping this works well for them, and that was, this was part of the reason that we have a check-in after the, after the summer season, not so much...
I think we should have some feedback from them following.
Right. If there's no further discussion, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes 5-0 unanimously. And that brings us to a couple of other previously-approved land use board orders. And I, these are changes in historic overlays, and I will turn to Rhett again to describe these two.
Yep. So, as you'll recall, last week, we held a hearing. There were two applicants requesting reductions in the historic overlays on two separate properties, the William Finley House and the Scanlon Vorpal House and Water Tower. That was following a recommendation by the Historic Review Board that the board agreed to reduce those historic overlays. The order's before you today accomplish that, so...
And I guess we need to move separately on...
Yeah, we will need two separate votes on those orders.
Two separate votes on this, so. So, I would, we did have a public hearing before, so that's the reason this is not up for public hearing this time. So, I would ask for a motion on the William Finley House, perhaps.
Chair Leehan, I move we approve the board order reducing the historic landmark overlay of the William Finley House as previously approved at the January 11, 2012 land use hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lininger and seconded by Commissioner Bernard that we approve the board order reducing the historic landmark overlay of the William Finley House as previously approved. Is there discussion on this item?
I just have a question. What is the reason for the, reducing the overlay?
So, the way the overlays are done is when the house is designated a landmark, an overlay is put on top of the entire tax lot. And so, if they want to go in and do subsequent, if they want to partition the property or develop part of it, then we have to reduce that overlay so that they can do that without having to comply with the very high standards that our historic preservation laws require.
Thank you.
Then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. And so I'm like, that passed 5-0 also. I keep wanting to say 5-1, but I know there's not six of us. 5-0, and is approved unanimously. And that brings us to the one on the Scanlon House. So I would entertain a motion on that. I don't think we need to. And someone who'd like to say that, second word?
Chair Leehan, I move we approve the board order reducing the historic landmark overlay of the Scanlon Vorpal House as previously approved at the January 11, 2012 land use hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Damon and seconded by Commissioner Bernard that we approve the board order reducing the historic landmark overlay of the Scanlon Vorpal House as previously approved. So is there any discussion on this one? Oh, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That one likewise passes unanimously, 5-0. And, and that brings us to citizen communication, I believe. And, and the first person I have on citizen communication is the mayor of Damascus, Steve Spinnett.
Okay. Well, greetings again, Chair and Commissioners. Few months ago, I came and spoke to you regarding the 388 and 386 competing measure and encouraged you not to do that, put the competing measure up, which I felt was confusing to the public and that it would be unsuccessful anyway, and that it would, it would taint your credibility. Those aren't the exact words, but in effect, that's what I said. I believe that all those things happened, which, which was done by, could have been done by a, the competing measure was just signed by the stroke of a pen within the comfortable confines of, of the offices here at Clackamas County. Which brings me to another initiative that's beginning to be circulated, at the beginning stages, on the light rail. The restrict, it'll be asking people to vote on, of any funds, I don't have the wording in front of me, of light rail, and you'll see it begin to be circulated. And I'm asking the county commissioners to, instead of forcing the public to use family time and their own resources and to go out in this time of year to gain signatures, that the county commissioners actually put it on the ballot, as it's, as it's worded by the citizens, just to consider that. I think it would be goodwill. I'm not asking all the commissioners to agree with the outcome. That's not what I'm asking. But to agree to, simply agree, and to place that on the ballot for the voters to decide. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have is Les Poole.
Just want to hold something up. I brought this with me last week and forgot to bring it in from my car, so I brought it today. The county does a great job on this calendar, and it's the safety preparedness calendar. And maybe in the comments at the end of the meeting, you can let folks know where you can pick it up. I've given these to family members, and people start looking at the little notes and things you can do to be prepared, and, and they're stunned. We all know how many people decide to go up in the gorge with a cellphone that doesn't work, and a flashlight with two hours of batteries. I spoke with Richard Langdon yesterday, and he couldn't be here. I didn't ask him if he was out creating jobs in this county, but I'll bet he is. And I'm sure he appreciates that that issue was handled with the food carts, or mobile vending units as they're called. I'll certainly let you know that the Damascus mayor just made a real, simple grassroots statement that I certainly endorse. The public's feeling disconnected. We're heading towards an election, and if you want to get reelected, one of the best things you could do is endorse a public vote on this. Yeah, boy, that'll keep you in office quick. Interestingly, last night, someone called me, and they were looking at some video from City of Milwaukee back when we found out we didn't have enough money to cross Kellogg Lake and terminate the light rail line at the Park Avenue location, which is a very dangerous intersection south of Milwaukee. And read to me something from the meeting minutes from the Milwaukee City Council. And the general manager of Trimate testified, reassuring the council, Jim Bernard was mayor at the time, reassuring them that we're going to somehow come up with $150 million to get this thing to Park Avenue, so that the end of the line and the parking isn't in Milwaukee. And he commented that if they built the shorter line, they deleted that last section, the project would lose the county's $25 million. So if the county doesn't pay the $25 million because the project is shortened, then we don't have to go through this process that's forthcoming. And we can take that $25 million out of the urban renewal district at town center and put it in a better place. There's a Pakistani rebellion going on. People are very, very frustrated. I'm getting so many phone calls that my phone was $121 over last month, and I'm sure there's a grant I can apply for to cover that. Thank you.
Okay, the next, the next card I have is Kevin Johnson.
Kevin Johnson, 6970, Winfield Court, Gladstone. It's been two, it's been two weeks since I was here, and as of now, I've received no answers to any of my questions. Let me help you with one. From the library district of Clackamas County explanatory statement in the November 2008 voter's pamphlet. In part, the rationale for proposal reads, "The county has announced that barring new funding, the three county libraries will close. The new library district would provide, reads in part, this dedicated funding would allow the libraries in Clackamas County to stay open and continue their programs. The voter's pamphlet is probably the only source of information some voters use to make their decisions. The statement in the pamphlet turns out to be nothing but a huge lie. But of course, you all knew that already and don't care. County voters approved this measure relying on statements that were false, so fraudulently providing the dedicated funding. So why are the county libraries closing?" Here's another question. The city of Gladstone claims in their proposed operating budget for their new library that they will have a surplus of $350,000 the first year. Of course, the surplus goes up every year. The city has been told they can use the extra money for bond payment. After the bond is paid supposedly early because of all the extra county money, what happens to the extra? Will the county get to keep the extra money? Or will the city get to expand their operating costs to make sure there is nothing left? What a great use of county money. As I said last time, this whole library district was and is a con on the taxpayers of this county. I know none of you were commissioners when it started, but you should be ashamed for letting it continue. Of course, it's only taxpayer money. The time has come, the time is, the time is coming that you will only have three choices. Either stop spending money on your pet projects without a vote, a vote that the taxpayers have all the facts beforehand, just stop spending, or the third, which isn't really your choice, but the voters. You'll get to look for new jobs. The day is coming. Some of you may be in May, some at the next election. Now, can any of you answer my question about the excess library district money, or will somebody get back to me?
We'll have to get back to you.
Yes, we will have, and in fact, that's a work in progress. And what we need to do and what we're working on is sort of a overall response in a, in a general sense. I have to remind everyone, this was voted on over three years ago in 2008. There was a long run-up to this. There was a lot of public meetings, public discussion. There were library boards involved. So it didn't happen in a vacuum. It wasn't isolated. But we'll look at these issues, and we'll get a kind of comprehensive situation report back. And that's in progress right now. It's just not done.
No. Commissioner Bernard?
And in addition, this is tax revenue specifically for library district, which is restricted dollars and only be used for library district.
Correct. The measure that was passed in November of 2008, I believe it was, was 39 point something cents per thousand specifically for libraries and libraries only.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is Sylvia Kralczev.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Sylvia. You have my name and address?
Can you speak even more closely to the microphone?
There you go.
Thank you.
My name is Sylvia. You have my name and address on the blue card?
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to give it out on the air.
No, that's fine.
Because some crooks have broken into my place two times when I go to church. I hardly ever see a county sheriff anymore since their funds have been cut back. Seniors like myself are getting scared and think you should support the sheriff so they can catch the crooks to help, stop crime. What is your purpose for what you are doing with our property in Clackamas County? I know you commissioners make and control all the rules for the planning board in Clackamas County that they use on us. I'm very concerned, and I want to tell you why. I bought my place where I live in 1995 because it had two houses fairly close together. One was built in 1945, the other in 1962. Both were built before you had a planning board. Both were current on taxes. I had the kitchen remodeled by a licensed contractor in the small one after closing. All was well until Dean Brown from the county planning board came out and wrote me a citation for non-compliance in 2008. Then he told me he was a Christian and he could help me if I came to his office. I did. And then he made up a false report that the small two-bedroom house was a chicken coop and was never a house. He could have checked with the tax office for proof, but he didn't. I was shocked, and I wasted thousands of dollars trying to prove it was already a legal house. He told me that the burden of proof was on me, and he knew the records were either lost or ruined in the flood in 1996, when the planning board had to move to higher ground. I watched him, and I knew he was being dishonest. I spent more money on legal fees, and it got worse each time. My attorneys tried to work with the planning board because Dean Brown and his boss didn't want to admit the truth. The end results by Dean Brown was that I had no, had to decommission the older house or pay $4,000 or more fine per month. I have all the records and how much he cost me. There was nothing I could do about this, and I hear of these same acts on other seniors. They even did this same thing to Mr. Emmert, and I think he is a younger senior than I am. Mr. Bernard, if your words last week were truthful and you have a heart, as you stated, you should make this right. Now, the burden of proof is on you. We are not interested in a long fuzzy story from you about you helping the crooks that rob us. Most of us seniors have worked our life.
You're going to need to wrap up. I hope you're coming close to the end.
Paid lots of taxes, and now have to watch you waste our taxes on that train we don't ride. We want you to represent us or do it someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to respond in any way, or?
Well, I'd like to get a copy of what she read from, and we will certainly look into everything that's alleged there. That's news to me, what I'm hearing there.
Yeah. Again, predates everybody here. The next card is Mac Woods.
Thank you, Commissioners. That's just one of many elderly's that's very concerned about what's going on. And my purpose here today, I live in Camas City, you all know me very well, my life is an open book. And I'm willing to talk to any of you individually or all of you together. In fact, I think that'd be a great idea sometime. My purpose here today, Ms. Leehan, you wouldn't allow me to continue after Mr. Bernard last week said, "Go ahead and respond to his comment." I understand what common courtesy and respect is. I've been coming to these meetings almost a year, a little over a year now. And that's when you had five commissioners, same number now, but you had two others. Two is gone. Three of you in the middle are still here. I'm starting to be very concerned, and I want to get this question right out to you before I go farther, about the three of you here in the middle who's been commissioners way longer than I've ever come close to coming. We're concerned about what you're doing, and we're concerned about your purpose for pushing this light rail stuff on and on and on. I'm picking up and learning history of it. It seems to be there's only one and possibly two commissioners that's looking out for us. Is there some other ulterior reason you have for pushing it instead of listening to the voters? For goodness sakes. I'm seeing and hearing history. I just heard a comment, one we had a while ago, back, they just discovered last night. Mr. Bernard, I'm a Realtor. I pulled up your property down there where your garage is. It's less than a quarter of an acre. For goodness sakes, that ain't a big issue. Is there some other, let me be blunt, some other reason you, Charlotte, or Ann, has other property that you're trying to push this through so you can turn around and sell it to the, if the light rail goes through? I want to know. It's a mystery to me. I'm not stupid. I certainly respect and honor your positions here, every one of you. I'm just asking for honesty. I have a, I was supposed to pass this out. Can I have, give you this, Commissioner? And this for you, Mr. Bernard, please read it. Mine, personal gift to you from Christmas to understanding.
Right here.
Well, you'll have two of them. Give it to a friend, yours.
Thank you.
This one's honest, this one's accurate.
Oh, this one is?
Or you may check with my friend that is an instructor up at Lewis and Clark, teacher. He teaches the Constitution. I might pay for it if you want to go, learn what it's all about. And I ain't trying to be sarcastic, Mr. Bernard, I respect you guys. I just want you to know and understand, be honest with us and be truthful. I appreciate you and everything everybody else is doing. We got better things to do than come here and try to teach you what you should be doing for the ones that vote and pay our taxes. I own property. We're concerned, and for goodness sakes, this elderly lady here, they're learning how to go into the retirement home and tell people they got to re-register to vote so they'll have a chance to vote. And they're catching on their computer. I appreciate you hearing me give you the answer. I'd like to say more in a matter of time. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
So I'm going to step out and respond. First thing, I did look exactly out of this book, this book, and it is exactly what I quoted, word for word.
Understand. We don't, we're not interested in listening to a bunch of your comments and hearing ambiguous comments about what you're doing to fuzzy.
I thought you just said you, you understand being respectful. I'm just responding to your answer.
Let's do it when you're not wasting everybody's time. You say things, I've noticed, to sound good fuzzy feeling to, to try to paint a picture. We're not interested in that. We're interested in results, like the light rail. Get it over, get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you for hearing me too.
We will, we will go on to, the next person is Mariana Moore. We will, we will go on to the next person is Mariana Moore.
Yes, I'm Mariana Moore from Gladstone. I've been here before. In fact, I was here when we first filed our petitions to get on the ballot for our votes in Gladstone for spending money. And you didn't seem to even realize that you were in charge of libraries now in Gladstone. So I hope you've reviewed that a little because that two thousand and eight made the BCC our library overseers. And in accordance with that, Gladstone received a million dollars that was in this measure for improvements and to fix up the existing libraries. And we also got another one and a half million because we're taking in the people from the Oak Lodge Library. And so I was wondering if you followed the money because our understanding was the people that are looking at this new proposal for this ten million dollar library that's not in a good place for Oak Grove or really anybody else. And we're thinking, you know, wasn't that money supposed to go to take care of the library we already had? So they have already spent most of that million dollars on plans for building a new one. We had a city council meeting last week and a lot of supporters and opponents to building the library. But one of the ladies came with her bucket and she said, "It's a disgrace. We've got water leaking in the library and the children's area and it's moldy." And I'm saying, "Do you care if that money was not spent where it was intended to be spent?" They have obviously neglected the buildings in Gladstone. They're falling apart. And instead of spending money on that, they're planning this other library that the people should have a chance to vote on. And then they also, the other night, it came through finally that the city hall is needing two or three million dollars repaired because they haven't taken care of that either. As you do your job and you're putting money out there, and of course, I realize it was our money to start with that's come back to us, and I think you should be looking at that, and I think you should be doing some oversight on how this money is spent that you supposedly allocated for certain purposes where it hasn't been used. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that brings us to Commissioner, oh, oh, no, no, it doesn't, doesn't.
Well, I just wanted to let you know that Fire Chief Ed Wilson, City of Lake Oswego, submitted a letter for the record. It's a letter in support of the county's contract with AMR.
Oh, okay.
She wanted that submitted for the record.
All right. I appreciate that. And that brings us to the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. And at this point, we are sitting as the Clackamas County Housing Authority. Usually we have Erica Allison with us, but she is unable to attend today. And so I will now ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, there's one item on the Housing Authority Consent Agenda in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the second quarter of fiscal year 2012.
Okay. That's a short consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Lininger, that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero and is unanimous. And then that brings us now back to being the regular county commission once again, to our regular consent agenda. And I will ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title only.
Okay. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, a board order approving the mental health directors designee to authorize a custody hold under ORS 426.233, approval of a behavioral health services agreement with Catholic Community Services of Western Washington for crisis stabilization services for children, intense community-based services for children, and respite services for children, approval of a behavioral health services agreement with Cedar Hills Psychiatric Hospital for acute inpatient psychiatric services, approval of a behavioral health services agreement with Columbia Care Services, Inc. for outpatient mental health services, approval of a professional, technical, and consultant service contract with Iron Tribe for peer support services, approval of amendment number two to a professional, technical, and consultant service contract with Iron Tribe for peer support services, approval of a behavioral health services agreement with Portland DBT Program for outpatient mental health services, approval of a behavioral health services agreement with Western Psychology Counseling Services and outpatient substance abuse services and outpatient mental health services. And Steve's going to take the rest.
I'll take it from there. Moving on to the Finance Department, board order establishing a change fund for Clackamas County Community Health, Sunnyside Health, and Wellness Clinic. Board order establishing a change fund for Clackamas County Community Health, Centerstone Clinic. Board order creating a petty cash account for Clackamas County Community Health, Sunnyside Health, and Wellness Clinic. Board order creating a petty cash account for the Clackamas County Community Health, Centerstone Clinic. Department of Employee Services, approval of the labor contract between Clackamas County and the Federation of Parole and Probation Officers. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Underwater Environment Services, acceptance of easements on behalf of Clackamas County Tri-City Service District for the Holly Lane culvert replacement. Approval of a professional services agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One, Tri-City Service District, and Brown and Caldwell, Inc. for the bio solids and energy program development and solids handling planning efforts. That completes our consent agenda.
Okay. Any comment on any of the consent agenda items? Hearing none? Then all the, oh, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Damon that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Passes five zero unanimously. And that brings us to Commissioner Communication. And I just want to start here by, with an announcement and say that yesterday, the Oregon Department of Transportation announced that the government camp rest area will remain open permanently. And this is, this is a big shift from where we were with it, closing immediately. Last year, the rest area was scheduled to be closed due to state budget reductions. And at that time, many of our citizens and visitors to Clackamas County who rely on this as the only public rest area on Highway twenty-six between Portland and Madras came and spoke with us. We went up to the mountain. We met with, with a number of our state legislators who have worked collaboratively to bring this, this forward at, in Salem. And it's, we're very pleased that, that the efforts have been successful in getting that open. And so I want to thank our whole, thank our delegation in Salem and, and very pleased about this. And I don't know if anyone had anything else they want to add.
Well, I hope they spend some money remodeling it. Now it's, needs some work.
Okay. And so with that, anyone else who would like to speak under Commissioner Communication? I was going to start, we started at that end last time, so how about this end?
Well, I'd just like to, you know, on some of the comments today that we do indeed follow up, and you mentioned, Steve, that on the library one, you're, it's a work in progress. Like to understand that. As I heard the ballot, the ballot title was as read, you know, I kind of got the sense that three, if I heard it correctly, that three libraries would remain open. And that was, was in the ballot title. So if that's the case, you know, were there three? I don't know. I can't remember. But I do know that Oak Lodge is probably one of those three. So if it's contrary to what's actually taking place, then certainly like, legal opinion as to the standard.
We'll respond to all of that, yeah. We'll put together something.
And I, I sense that, does anyone have a report or maybe can tell me what the status is on the, on the, on the ballot title initiative, I mean initiative? Has that been, is that out for signature? Or what's the status of that? Anyone know?
I'm not aware that it's out for signature.
I don't think the challenge period has yet expired. There's a time period by statute which an elector can challenge the ballot title. And I think today is the deadline and it can't be circulated for signature gathering until such time as a ballot title appeal period has expired.
And that's today?
I believe it's today.
Okay. I just wanted to remind the board, I think it is an opportunity somehow to, you know, to make amends with the citizenry, whether it's something that is more consistent with law or whatnot. But I know, I know I made the motion twice and I don't suspect there's any reconsideration of that. But I would just float that out there. The, just want to remind everyone out there that February first is the fourth Commissioner Roundtable. It'll be held on, again, February first, Wednesday evening between 5:30 and 6:30. And we've kind of added an extra half hour for buffer in case there was some, some run over. So I encourage anyone who has any issues or they want to bring something to the county commissioners, that you have that opportunity. And it's on the screen. And that's all I have right now.
Okay. Do you want to go next or?
Okay. First thing I'd, I'd like to say is that we don't do this job to benefit ourselves. And I've supported light rail for, as long as I can remember. And the suggestion, and it was a suggestion that, that we would personally benefit from this. Matter of fact, I had to during my time as mayor make sure that it didn't benefit me. It doesn't touch my property. And the suggestion many times over the years has been, it's going to destroy the community or it's going to make us rich. So I've always wondered which one I would declare. So that's, that's been a long time discussion, many times at city council when I was there. The fact that it goes to Park Avenue was required because in order to get ridership, enough ridership to get federal dollars, it required that it go to Park Avenue. But one of the discussions was phasing. And as mayor, I was not in favor of phasing the project because if you do that, it tends to move on to somebody else's projects. Matter of fact, the, the other light rail line at one time was supposed to come down to Milwaukee. And I suggested that they spend that money, you know, bring it to Milwaukee. But instead, Portland took the money and applied it to their downtown project. And that took that money away or opportunity for Clackamas County and Milwaukee. So I think the suggestion that we would personally benefit from this project, I don't, I do own more property in Milwaukee. I own a home off of River Road, I mean off of River Road, off of Lake Road. And I personally believe that light rail will benefit everyone in Milwaukee and in Clackamas County. It'll provide lots of opportunities for jobs. And they often call it the Portland to Milwaukee light rail, but I always suggest it be called Milwaukee to Portland light rail. Because I'm hoping that people will have an opportunity to redevelop their properties, bring jobs to Milwaukee and to Clackamas County. And certainly, having ridden the bus or drove to Portland State for ten years, what a wonderful opportunity, educational opportunity for people who would ride to light rail to Portland. So I do, will not benefit personally. I hope the entire county and Milwaukee benefits from the development of light rail. The other thing is that, a suggestion that we should put it out for a vote. I, we have a contract. I don't think a vote against light rail would impact that contract. Matter of fact, if, as I quoted last time, the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Oregon restricts any measures to avoid a contract due to a vote. I think that's what'll end up, the discussion will be. Finally, in case somebody's keeping track, I will not be here next Thursday because I will be at a Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee, of which I am a member. And so I will not be here next Thursday. I happen to believe, and I've always believed, that your participation in regional, local, and state and federal organizations really are very important because they bring those important dollars, those important relationships. That can only develop with a face-to-face opportunity. And I talked one time about my, my experience as mayor. I immediately insisted that I go to Washington, D.C. with the J-PAC group. And every year, of course, they fought that with, for all the mayors because it was a big group. But I had an opportunity to meet the, you know, learn, become friends with the members from all around the region, all around the state, and to develop relationships with the federal government. And was successful in bringing dollars back along with Charlotte Leehan for Beckman Road, for Lake Road, and many, many projects worth millions and millions of dollars to Clackamas County. And those millions and millions of dollars mean jobs. And that's what I'll continue to do. On the federal level, there, there's always an effort to cut dollars to public safety and to our court system. And I will be fighting to make sure that doesn't happen. Another suggestion was that we've cut the sheriff's budget. We have not cut the sheriff's budget. It's forty-one million dollars. If you talk public safety, it's more in the sixty-nine million dollar range that we spend in public safety, which includes courts. And our mental health services and, and all those programs are very, very important. But the sheriff's budget, matter of fact, we added another two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for community corrections just a couple of weeks ago. Were, in the prior budget, we added ed classes for people who are getting out of jails to help them find jobs. Many of those people have messed up and are trying to change their, turn their lives around. So I will not be here next Thursday because I will be attending a national Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee meeting. Also, I often miss Thursday meetings because I'm on the State Board of Community Corrections. And I'll tell you why that's important. Is we're actually looking at the formula right now in our group, the non-technical group. And Chris Hoy in Community Corrections is on the technical group to make sure that we get the money that the state promised us, to make sure that community corrections is whole. So that's what I've been doing in Salem, as well as my chair, co-chairmanship of the Public Safety Committee for AOC, of which I am the chair, and will be the chair or co-chair of another committee on juvenile justice, which will be starting next month. So I enjoy public safety and it's always been a commitment. And so thank you for the time.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Damon?
Okay. I am not going to talk about light rail, but I'm going to talk about Damascus. And I didn't know that the mayor was going to be here today, so this isn't in any way to pander to that he came. These were comments that I wanted to share with all of you about what's going on in Damascus. So there's a couple of things. I mean, one is, is that there was a large town hall meeting on Saturday afternoon out in Damascus. There were more than eighty people there. And the community is really struggling to figure out next steps about how to put in place their comprehensive plan. And in some ways, I guess I will talk about light rail. There is a connection here about, you know, kind of the fallout from a vote. So here's a community So here's a community that voted down their comprehensive plan because they weren't happy with how it was proposed, and they're really struggling to try to figure out what makes sense for Damascus and how to move that forward. But at the end of the day, they have to have a comp plan. And there was still conversation in that room of people honestly thinking that they could, you know, secede from the region or not be, not comply with state law or not be a part of Metro. And so the, the vote doesn't negate that. The vote allowed them more time perhaps to be able to have more conversation, but at the end of the day, they still have to have a comp plan to comply with state law. And so, you know, the, you could, you could just feel in the, you know, the struggle in the room of folks trying to reconcile, you know, how to, how to meet the letter of the state law with what they would like to have for their future of Damascus. And in terms of the people, you know, so I would like to, last week, I introduced this new thing I wanted to do, which is highlight a little business and thank some people for their service. So in Damascus, really, it's the folks in Damascus. That city council, many of them have been there for more than four years. A number of them have been there through the incorporation conversations, so folks like Barb Ledbury. And there are so, that, that community has so many dedicated volunteers on all sides of the issue. And the room was full of them again on Saturday. And so I just wanna thank the city councilors for, you know, sticking with it, for working hard to try to reflect the values of their community and try to move forward. It's no easy task to build a new community. It's, it, it takes time. And so I just wanna thank the folks of Damascus for really sticking it out and trying to do what's best for, for their community. And their names are too numerous to, they're, they're just too numerous to name off. As far as a business, I am gonna highlight a little business in Damascus, which is the 76 Station. They're right on Highway 212. I see somebody in the audience nodding their head. People in the know know that they've got the best pricing gas around. John Gillespie is a local owner of that business, very active in his community. And they actually have a Facebook page, which I don't know very many gas stations that have a Facebook page, that are, that's really part of that community. There is a little shout out to the Union 76 Station in Damascus. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Lineger.
Right. Well, I know we've been thinking a lot about how we can make good investments of community resources, and people have strongly held views about that. And there's one area that I care a lot about, that I wanted to bring to your attention. I, I'm on the Governor's Commission on Alcohol and Drug Policy, and together with the Attorney General and the head of Health, the Department of Human Services and the head of Corrections and others, we're trying to figure out ways that we can invest money in a statewide basis to help people who have addiction issues recover so they don't end up in other larger problems that cost a lot more or that, that cost the community more to help their families. And I wanted to give you some statistics that we're gonna be sending as part of a letter to the, the state legislature as they try to figure out where to put our statewide resources in this next legislative session. Child welfare is really affected by unmanaged addiction. 63% of the kids who are abused or neglected have parents with drug and alcohol problems, according to statistics this commission has gathered. On average, it costs $5,000 to treat a parent for substance abuse while it costs $30,000 a year to put a child in foster care. It's a lot more expensive. In a 2010 study of 24 Oregon drug courts found that there was a return of $2.41 on each dollar of, of investment in drug courts. So, you know, people have different priorities about where we should be spending money. I personally think that if you care about strong families, if you care about strong kids, and you care about careful use of resources, investing in, in drug and alcohol prevention and addiction recovery treatment is a great investment. So I hope you'll join me in supporting those services. Thanks.
Thank you. I just wanted, oh.
No, you go ahead, but I have one thing to end up on.
Oh, okay. I wanted to remind people about the next upcoming Borland Stafford Community Forum or Town Hall, which is on February 4th, the morning of February 4th, at nine o'clock. And it's at Athie Creek School in, off of Borland Road. And this, this forum, I know a lot of people attended the first one, was talking about density, capacity, those kinds of issues, what might urbanize where, not exactly where, but generally in that area. This next forum will be on transportation and what the challenges are in the Stafford-Borland area. And to talk about that, we have invited the, the three mayors, and they will be presenting from Tewallaton, Lake Oswego, and West Lynn. And then we will have a representative there from ODOT to talk about the I-205 impacts and, and probably someone there from Metro to talk about how it all fits in the regional transportation plan. So it won't be, it won't be a forum to solve any problems or plan any places where roads will go, but, but just one to address the challenges, get all of those, the, the various challenges out on the table so that we can look at it from the perspective of those different lenses and, and then have plenty of opportunity for question and answer and dialogue at that. So it should be, I, I hope that that is also a well-attended forum in Stafford-Borland. And with that, Mr.?
Yes, I wanna circle back to the beginning of the meeting when you heard from Dana Robinson, our emergency operations leader. Since that time, there's, it's continued to rain. No big surprise there. And she has told me that they are doing a low-level activation of the Emergency Operations Center. And they may have to do some evacuations at the Shady Adell area in Malala. That's a may, not definitely, but that's a little update from where we were. Also, I think it bears mentioning that this meeting was the first time we've held a legislative amendment within the regular board meeting on Thursdays previously, and that gets back to ZDO 232, which we did earlier. Previously, we would've had a separate meeting on Wednesdays, which was fine, but this really saves some time and energy. You don't have to remobilize staff and yourselves for an extra day. That's why the meeting took a little longer, but we're getting things done probably more efficiently this way. So I think that bears mentioning as well.
And I would just close by saying that one of our, the people who works in our administrative office was injured in a car accident day before yesterday, quite badly, and is in the hospital. So I just wanna remind people to be very careful with the driving conditions because even without the snow and ice, there's so much water on the roadways that it's very easy to hydroplane or skid or have someone skid into you. And, and it's, and it's often hard to tell with, with such heavy rain whether, whether there's a puddle there or not, how, how deep it is pooled or, you know, what the situation is. It's sometimes hard to tell. So cut your speeds down a little bit and be extra careful in high-water situations. And with that, I will, we, we can adjourn.